Okay, it is 6:15. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Anderson, I have a little call please.
Mrs. Eichols?
Here.
Dr. Hooker?
Here.
Mrs. Johnston?
Here.
Mrs. Lewis?
Here.
Mrs. Singh?
Here.
Good. Can I have a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda and agenda number?
Tell me that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't you push the button, don't you?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it works on the button anymore.
Let me try this one over here.
Well, let me text Denny. Maybe he can make that work. We have no lights. Can you come fix it?
So in the meantime...
Hey, Ken? Ken? Hey, Ken? Can you hear me?
No.
There we go. Thank you, Melissa.
We got him turned on, Melissa.
Melissa to the rest of you. Can I have a motion to go into executive session in accordance with the higher revised code 121.22 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or a floor official?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A little call please.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichols?
Aye.
Hang on one second.
Okay, it is 7:02 and we're going to reconvene the reunion meeting and we'll start with question board.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Connect, I'd like to start with correspondence, recognition, and announcements.
Yes, welcome everybody, and we've got a couple of important announcements. I'd like to start tonight by talking about our school reopening update, if that's okay. We filled in several inquiries about the reopening of our schools and I wanted to share several updates. There are several important items that pertain to COVID-19 that have been influencing the state's delays in communications about reopening schools, and I think our board and our administration understand how frustrating that is and how stressful it can be for families. We want to try to minimize disruptions for them. I want to share a couple important points tonight. First, there's been much discussion in the last few days that the Ohio Department of Health is considering the development of an alert system for schools. That planning will be shared with us soon, but it has not been unveiled yet, so we are awaiting that news. Second, there is recent legislation that's been proposed in the Ohio Senate that is being weighed in Columbus currently with regards to local control for school opening decision-making for boards of education, and the impact of the timings of those hearings and testimony are also causing a delay in us getting school news. Third, a lot of our parents saw news last week about some school items that were issued in Warren County, and I just want to clarify to everybody that we are required to follow guidance from Hamilton County, not Warren County, and we are in constant contact with our county health officials who have been very helpful throughout the entire pandemic process to update us just as soon as they get new guidance from the state of Ohio. We don't have any more or less information than any other school in our county at this time, and I feel like that communication that went out late last week caused some confusion in our general area around Cincinnati because it came from another county, but those are not the officials that we are beholden to and work with. Here's some good news. House Bill 164 was passed into law last Friday. Those who have seen it know that it gives us some similar flexibility moving forward as a school district to manage COVID-19-related operations in the 2020-2021 school year, much like the previous resolutions that were passed during the pandemic that you all passed a resolution on that allowed us to manage and operate the district with much more flexibility.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty to justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Connect, I'd like to start with correspondence, recognition, and announcements.
Yes, welcome everybody, and we've got a couple of important announcements. I'd like to start tonight by talking about our school reopening update, if that's okay. We filled in several inquiries about the reopening of our schools and I wanted to share several updates. There are several important items that pertain to COVID-19 that have been influencing the state's delays in communications about reopening schools, and I think our board and our administration understand how frustrating that is and how stressful it can be for families. We want to try to minimize disruptions for them. I want to share a couple important points tonight. First, there's been much discussion in the last few days that the Ohio Department of Health is considering the development of an alert system for schools. That planning will be shared with us soon, but it has not been unveiled yet, so we are awaiting that news. Second, there is recent legislation that's been proposed in the Ohio Senate that is being weighed in Columbus currently with regards to local control for school opening decision-making for boards of education, and the impact of the timings of those hearings and testimony are also causing a delay in us getting school news. Third, a lot of our parents saw news last week about some school items that were issued in Warren County, and I just want to clarify to everybody that we are required to follow guidance from Hamilton County, not Warren County, and we are in constant contact with our county health officials who have been very helpful throughout the entire pandemic process to update us just as soon as they get new guidance from the state of Ohio. We don't have any more or less information than any other school in our county at this time, and I feel like that communication that went out late last week caused some confusion in our general area around Cincinnati because it came from another county, but those are not the officials that we are beholden to and work with. Here's some good news. House Bill 164 was passed into law last Friday. Those who have seen it know that it gives us some similar flexibility moving forward as a school district to manage COVID-19-related operations in the 2020-2021 school year, much like the previous resolutions that were passed during the pandemic that you all passed a resolution on that allowed us to manage and operate the district with much more flexibility. This is really good news for the class of 2021 and for all students with regards to testing specifically. So we'll be sharing some information about that, but it allows us to operate in a more flexible manner. Today, we'll be releasing an update for parents with results from our May 21st parent survey. We left that parent survey open for more than two and a half weeks. I think it's still open, actually. We received over 985 responses. It's the greatest survey I've ever seen for 1,400 families in a school district. I was really happy with the input that we received from parents. Our administration, our teachers that are working committees to plan for the fall are very thankful for that input, and we understand that a majority of our parents wish for a safe return to their students to come to campus in the fall and do in-person learning. We know that that's what they all want, and of course, I think we would welcome that if we're given the opportunity to do it that way. We are currently preparing three scenarios for school models for the fall that we have shared in general. We have staff committees working on them. One model is a return to campus for interested families to the extent that is allowable under the law. Another model will also allow us to offer a full online option to families that are interested, which we have heard from families who have an interest in that, and developing that type of program is important to us. And we also know that our staff has been training and intends to be fully trained and prepared to pivot to a hybrid or blended learning model if it's necessary or if it's required moving forward. So our staff has worked very hard. I commend Dr. Stewart and the committees and our administrative team for all the work they put into these three models. We hope to be able to give people much more detail as soon as we release that update with some guidance from O D H, and we'll also get some suggestions from the Ohio Department of Education we'll have to take into account. But our county health officials are really driving what we can and can't do in terms of safety right now, and we are waiting on some news from them.
Can I just ask a question in the interest of transparency so the community knows what we're thinking about? I see one of the biggest hurdles, and I'm hearing this from other school districts, is going to be the busing. If you come back fully in here, how do you get the kids here? And I just think that we need to know, the community needs to know that you all are actively looking at all the potential options, everything from canceling high school busing to free up buses for the elementary and primary and middle, but also one thing that I think we ought to consider that you may have already thought about, but we should look at, is if we're going to try to bring every kid to school every day, doing it in shifts isn't going to work. That's going to fall apart massively. I think that we have a very tight-knit community that I think, based on that survey, 40% of people said they're planning on bringing their own kid to school. If we could get a percentage of the district to agree to bring their kid to school every day, then we only have to bus the rest of the percentage, but plan for it. In other words, say, you know, we're not forcing you, we're not refusing to bus your fourth grader, but if you are willing to commit to bringing your kid to school and picking them up every day, you know, that brings up another set of nightmares. I get it, a lot of cars, but I think that we could potentially be able to do this. There is no way we can go buy 20 extra buses, or at least 20 extra buses, but I think it would be a disservice to the community. And I've heard, and I think Nikki's heard, and other people have heard, everybody says, please do not bring us half-day this and half-day that, or kids coming in, some kids get here at eight, some kids get here at nine. It's just not going to work. So I would like us to actively look at the potential of involving our parents in the solution of transport.
Yes, and I think to your point, when parents see our update, Dr. Hooker, what they will see is a summary of some of their input, and they have signaled to us that there could be some flexibility in terms of transportation as well as food service delivery options that will allow us to plan more effectively, and we also know that they signaled that we have a segment who have needs that we're going to make sure that we cover. And so when the parents receive that update here later, I hope that they will continue to review all of that and give us input along the way. We're also including in our updates some next steps, and part of those next steps will be a much more specific survey to a parent where they will give individual selection and choice feedback about their children, and also we're going to give them an opportunity for some further input as we plan and move forward. So I hope that that clears up some of the things that we're working on and it gives people a general update. But I will share with all of you, we are frustrated professionally and waiting for the news. We understand that our parents also want to know, and we know that they want to be here, and I believe on campuses the best for our students, we'll do whatever we can that's allowable under the law and that's safe to bring them back, and we hope to hear soon.
I have a question, because I read in the news last few days, Cincinnati Public has come out with like five different plans, and they're obviously waiting on what the health department's going to say as well, but some of them depend on can we socially distance six feet versus socially distance three feet. So I guess my question in putting together the plan for everybody to come back, is that assuming that we can actually six feet socially distance?
Yes, right now, the plans that our staff are working on are following the guardrails we've been given, and to date, they are six feet of social distancing on all sides, masks required, and we are being told that bus capacity is an issue that's being discussed. So when we get those guardrails more well-defined, we'll know what our classroom capacity or learning space size could work, how many students we could work with. We'll also know how many we can transport, and we're hoping for as much flexibility as possible in making those decisions.
Cam, I think one thing, if I understood the CDC's recommendation, please, Melissa, somebody correct me, they're saying you don't have to be six feet apart front to back as long as it's front to back. In other words, you've got to be six feet side to side. Am I right on that, guys?
Well, I think this is a great, a great point that you're making again, Dr. Hooker, and this is what caused some confusion with the news last week from another county. The state has to tell us whether the county decides or whether the Ohio Department of Health will give everyone the same guidance, and right now in Hamilton County, it's six feet on all sides. So until Hamilton County gives us different guidance or O D H overrules that, that's what we have to go by.
Okay.
Sorry, what I was interested in is, it sounds to me like you're going to give the option, if parents really don't want to bring their kids back, they can do online learning. Is that right?
Yes.
And how will you level the playing field so that the level of education experience is the same for them across the board?
I would just say right now, Elizabeth, that we are looking at providing our high-quality teachers and our faculty to deliver that programming, and Dr. Stewart and the faculty have been working to do professional development with some of the best blended learning experts in the country, one of whom is local to the University of Cincinnati and others at the University of Colorado. I am very pleased with the professional learning plan that we've put in place. Our teachers have committed to an additional 30 hours of learning this summer, whether they end up being the online teacher or not, to be ready for hybrid learning, and I believe that those teachers that we either allocate or assign to those roles based on the demand for how many students we need to service is going to be fine, and they're going to be our teachers, and they're going to be prepared.
And one other question, if let's say 100% of our students come back to be on campus, can our room sizes accommodate all of them at the same time?
We can accommodate everybody if we're allowed to bring them all back, and that will depend on the guidance, and I believe that there is going to be a social distancing requirement. We're just not sure exactly what it's going to be just yet. Nobody has told us that there won't be social distancing expected or required, and we're really waiting to get that detail.
And how are you going to police that social distancing? And maybe that's not the right term. I'm sorry, but...
Enforce.
We're gonna...
But you understand, it's one thing to say that you can expect six feet social distancing, but how do you enforce that?
What I would equate this with right now is not enforcement so much as learning and education. It's going to become a part of our program. Just as we show young students how to maneuver the hallways in our primary building, we're going to teach them about social distancing. We're going to teach people the difference between a rationale for wearing a mask or having a shield on. We're going to have to talk to our students and train them and teach them, as well as adults. It's going to become a part of our learning and how we manage our culture together, and a lot of it's going to be an honor system. And then we're going to learn from mistakes as we go, and I don't think it's a perfect system, which is another reason why many people want more details and more guidance than less. So I think we're going to work through it together, and we're going to do a lot of learning together, and people ultimately have to feel safe and confident when they come to school.
Thank you.
And Kurt, I assume, again, we don't know what they're going to say, but I'm assuming that the current tea leaves are saying that it's going to require a mask.
I don't want to guess, because I think that's what everybody is trying to do. What we have been told to date, the current guidance from our county, is that social distancing is required, masks are required, and that there will be limited capacity for learning spaces and buses that are being considered. We've been told to expect those things. That can change tomorrow, but that's what we've been told, so that's how we're trying to move forward with our planning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just to clarify, so right now, we're waiting for the state government or governor or the senate, whoever's in the process of deciding, to tell O D H what jurisdiction they have, and then they determine if it's by county or by state? Is that what I'm understanding?
My understanding is that the executive branch and the Ohio Health Department will tell us what the general guidance is, and that they intend to give each county authority to make local decisions about that guidance. So the question remains, will there be some blanket statements by the Ohio Department of Health for all 610 school districts in Ohio or not? We don't know yet. And what is turned over in terms of authority to Hamilton County, we must follow, and it might look different than another county. I'll just follow up by saying, Hamilton County, Franklin County, and Cuyahoga County have been planning very closely and aligned because they're the largest population centers in the state, and there are the largest amount of health concerns in those counties. So that is another thing that may make decision-making for Hamilton County a little different than another county, and when the governor signals what level gets to make the most decisions, we will know.
How about the music department and the theater? Will they also be coming back? And will, or will that all be online? Because they were talking that music classes will be all online. Is that right?
No, I don't, I don't think any plans are set in stone. I think all of our options are to try to maximize the amount of programs and courses we offer. I think that our teachers went into the planning with our administrators to try to continue to offer those things we believe make us uniquely Indian Hill in terms of course offerings and to hold as many of them intact as possible, and some of that will be based on what we learn. We hope to offer what we, all that we can offer.
All that we can offer, that's good. So is there a timeline when we will know?
Uh, no.
By when we will?
I, we had hoped that the timeline would be, we would be getting an update today. We have not, and it has been delayed for over two weeks, and we understand that that's frustrating, but as soon as we know, everyone in the county will know. We will get that guidance at the same time, and we will share out as soon as we get that.
What about the date for opening school? Is that up in the air as well?
Right now, our current school calendar is intact. We have not moved forward with communicating the official first day of school because, again, we do not know what the guidance is, and we may want to revisit and dialogue about our school calendar based on what we learned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish we could give you more detail, and everybody listening, I understand, and I appreciate you asking all those questions, and hopefully our parents understand. We're going to share with them an update here tonight, and then we'll also move forward as soon as we get more detail.
I guess the only question that I would have for you as a follow-up, given our board meeting dates, is that our next regularly scheduled meeting is beginning of August, and if the legislation passes that the school boards on an individual basis must set what the guidance is for their schools, then we are going to have that, because we cannot, as administrators, you can't just start assuming that that's the way we're going to proceed.
Correct.
The board would have to vote on and discuss it and make decisions. So I only say that because we don't have any regularly scheduled board meetings for July, and we probably need to think about having availability and doing it obviously sooner rather than later so that we can, we can tell.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right. As soon as we know more, then we can talk about a schedule.
Yeah, as soon as, you know, do something like a doodle poll or something to figure out when everybody's available, as soon as we can make a decision.
Thank you. So a couple of other celebration comments we'd like to make under the recognition part of this. I want to congratulate Pranav Rastogi. Recently, Pranav's artwork on the pandemic was selected as part of the Congressional Art Competition. He received a second-place overall prize in his category, and his piece of artwork is going to be displayed for the next year in Washington DC at the Capitol Building. So congratulations to Pranav Rastogi of the high school for his wonderful artwork. I also would like to congratulate outgoing senior Matty Antonucci, who was recently named the Small School Girls Basketball Player of the Year for the second straight year, which is a wonderful accomplishment for her, and she's getting ready to move on to Florida Gulf Coast University to continue playing. So we're really proud of Matty, and congratulations to her. And I believe that next up is a report on our food service.
What this is, I called it a food service report. The United States Department of Agriculture requires that we have this presentation for the board. Unfortunately, because of numbers, we're not allowed to bring our food service management team in, so I tried to improvise and do the best I could. I put what they were going, what they would present as their PowerPoint presentation. It goes over just basically what they're going to train their staff in each year, and then the date that they train them for this year was August 11th, 2019, and then I also added three supplementary documents that they would have talked about as well. Basically, our main goal here is to satisfy that requirement that there was a presentation for the board, and even this minimal presentation will satisfy that requirement. Item C is an update on the energy project. I asked Mr. Brad Moats of Moats Engineering to prepare a summary. I will read that. Last fall, the school district advertised and invited energy service contractors to submit qualifications for a design bill energy performance contract. Qualifications were received from nine companies. Five companies were interviewed, and for those interviews, from those interviews, four organizations were invited to submit formal proposals. The proposal process was delayed due to COVID-19. The formal proposals were received on June 12th, and the two most responsive firms were interviewed on June 17. Competitive pricing was provided for seven energy-saving initiatives. Based upon their site visits, all the responders were encouraged to offer other saving ideas in the form of substitute bids. At least 25 substitute proposals were provided by the two firms that were interviewed. The school district and Moats Engineering are compiling a revised scope of work to integrate some of these additional energy-saving concepts. The two finalists will then submit final pricing. It is envisioned that the revised information will be distributed to contractors by the beginning of next week and that the final pricing will be available near the middle of July. The energy-saving project will likely range in cost from $2.5 million to $4 million, with a target of an estimated payback based upon energy and operational savings of not more than 15 years. So again, that may be another reason why we need to have a special meeting in July. We may have something along the lines of accepting a proposal from one of these energy fitters. A lot of good information. Some of their supplemental proposals are really good.
Like what, did you say, Kira?
One of the best ones, I think Elizabeth mentioned it before, but one of them talked about ultraviolet lighting. I believe it's ultraviolet, that will help, that will go next to our filters and actually help kill bacteria and germs as they, before they even get to the filter. That was one of the, I just remember reading that one briefly. Some of them talked about even putting on ways to save energy when we open up our freezers. So it's actually saving, instead of having all of the cold come out of the freezer, we have the ability to keep that cold in there, and it saves on energy. All these things that we don't think of all the time, a lot of great proposals. So we look forward to talking with the remaining two groups. We're going to refine their proposals, and we'll hopefully have something ready for the board in July, and maybe we can even get something started in late July, early August before the kids get back.
Thanks, Mike.
Sounds exciting. Do you want to move on to the superintendent's reports?
So a board for your consideration tonight. We have several items. Under A, number one is the approval of a new kindergarten teacher. I know Mrs. Gray... I know Mrs. Graves wishes she could be here this evening, but because of our restrictions to number, she's not here live. Um, but we have several, uh, under number two, several third-party salary payments, uh, for reimbursements. Under number three, there are approval of several supplemental, uh, supplemental contracts. Under number four, we are, uh, looking for the approval of our new I H H S Assistant Principal, Mr. Andrew Renner. Under number five, we are asking for the approval of classified staff salary adjustments. Under number six, items A through J, as well as under the addendum, items K and L, we are asking for the approval of several supplemental contracts for, uh, summer work. Under number seven, approval of non-certified staff contracts and salaries. And under number eight, approval of administrative contract salary adjustment. And then we also have an additional, um, piece under number nine, uh, items A through H. Those are resignations and retirements. We also have under the addendum, item I, which is the resignation of our current Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Mark Alt. Under number 10, uh, we have tuition reimbursements for several salary, for several, several staff members, sorry. Um, and after some discussion, I would ask that you would entertain, uh, items A, one through 10, plus those addendum items for approval. Um, and I know we'd probably like to have some minor discussion about, uh, item, uh, nine, I, Dr. Alt.
So one, one thing I do, I want to comment, I want to go back to, um, um, number four, item A, the new Assistant Principal at the high school, which we're very excited about Drew Renner, um, joining us. It's unfortunate that he can't be here with us tonight, but that's what it's going to be for a while, I think. Um, but I do want to point out that, um, in the Personnel Committee, we did ask Dr. Alt if we had any minority applicants for this position, and we had none. And so I think, um, you know, going forward, my experience with diversity and inclusion is, you have to be intentional, and I know that we are intentional. But I think you have to be really intentional. So I would hope that the next time there's a big position, or better, any position for that matter, that we find ways to engage pools of minority applicants so that we are representing our school population and, um, and getting the best people out there at the same time. And, um, you know, we probably need to be more welcoming outwardly when we are interviewing people, uh, because if they don't feel that they're like us, they may not want to come and get to know us. So I would just hope we would continue that, because I know it's always on top of mind. But I think if we just all know to make it just that much more intentional, would be great. Um, and then I just want to say, um, you know, how really sorry we are to see Dr. Alt leave. I'm excited for this superintendent position for him. It rounds out his career nicely. Um, but he's had, gosh, how many years here do we know? At least?
Fifteen.
How many?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. I was going to say, at least since we've been in the district, so.
Still more than that.
Yeah, I feel like, well, he was, he was hired by Jane.
Yep.
Yeah, um, and just has been, you know, just a great representative, wonderful to work with. Um, I know the teachers and staff really respect him. You know, when there's a problem, he handles it very professionally and, um, with compassion for the people involved. And, uh, we are definitely going to miss Dr. Alt. Very sorry to see him go.
I would second that. I think Mark's been a great employee, has served us very well, and I'm excited for his advancement, and sorry that he'll be leaving.
Yeah, I would just like to echo that as well, and, uh, thank, uh, Dr. Alt, Mark, for all of his years of experience. You know, I think that some people don't get to see sometimes the work of Assistant Superintendents. Uh, some of it can be behind the scenes. Um, and I think it's really important for people to understand the countless number of employees that Dr. Alt mentored, um, the people that he was involved with in terms of helping develop their careers, um, whether they were classified employees or certified employees. And, uh, I just want to wish him well as he becomes the new leader of the Three Rivers School District. We're really happy for him, and sad to see him go, of course.
Boy, still going to be Taylor everything we've done. So could I have a motion for items A through, uh, A through, wait, sorry?
Yes.
A one through nine, sorry. Um, including the addendum, uh, to accept Dr. Alt's resignation, and, uh, that was the only addition, correct? Yes.
We want to go A, one through 10, plus the addendums.
Okay. A one through 10, plus the addendum, which is under number nine. Right?
Yeah, yeah, we have addendum items under number six and number nine.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion?
Sure.
Second. Roll call.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichols?
Aye.
Okay, uh, superintendent's report?
For my report this evening, I have under item A to approve the minutes of the May 19th regular meeting and the May 28th special meeting. Uh, item B is to approve the financial reports for the month ending May 31st, 2020. Uh, we have several contracts to approve. Typically, we approve these throughout the spring, uh, but with the unusual circumstances and the, um, sort of the non-traditional start of school next year, uh, we've, we've waited, and we've sort of refined some of these contracts. Um, and now we've got them on in June. Item one is for M E O Business Group. That's our OT and BT. That's for school year 2021. The occupational therapist, $124,000, and the physical therapist, $37,200. An additional contract with the M E O Business Group for our preschool speech therapist, uh, $12,400. Uh, the maximum healthcare services staffing rates cost is dictated by attachment A. Those, uh, services are as needed. Item four is Aramark Educational Services, a food service management for school year 21. Um, this is actually the sixth year we'll have Aramark in under this contract, which is unusual because typically we would do that RFP in the fifth year. Uh, the United States Department of Agriculture allowed us to, uh, continue with our, our food service for one more year based on the COVID-19 pandemic. Item five is the, is the Hamilton Clermont Cooperative for Technology Services, Item six, the Hamilton County E S C on behalf of Rockhorn Academy. Those are for student services and intervention solutions, And item seven is Hamilton County E S C on behalf of St. Vincent Fair. Student services and intervention solutions, $149,492.20. Items six and seven are both items that are taken out of the, uh, the Auxiliary Services Fund that we maintain for both of those non-public school districts. Item D is to authorize the treasurer to supplement appropriations as needed and to make necessary appropriation budget modification, including any advances and transfers to close the financial books for 2020. A listing will be provided for the minutes when approved. Item E is to accept a proposal for commercial casualty insurance for Ohio's school plan, A recommendation from our, um, insurance consultant was sent to each board member for their review, along with the financials of Ohio's school plan. Item F is the approval to pay an outman invoice for school due, Item G is to approve the 2021 Temporary Appropriations Resolution. Uh, this is so we can pay the bills in July before we have the permanent appropriations in August. Item H is a resolution declaring the impracticability of transportation and offering payment to parents in lieu of transportation for school year 2020.
I would like to make a comment on E. Um, this is another example of you going out and trying to wisely save the district money. You are always looking for a way to save us money, but can maintain the quality of service, and I appreciate that very much. So, thank you.
Uh, one thing, and then, thank you, Dr. Hooker. One thing I'd like to point out about the Ohio School Plan. Um, this is a pooled plan that's been in service for over 20 years. Um, it's now in 290 school districts statewide. So it's a very quality plan. Um, it serves a lot of districts very well, and I think it'll serve us very well in the future. Um, and we'll be, we'll be, uh, excited to give that broker call tomorrow and let her know that, uh, we can start the process of converting to that, that service.
And then on the, uh, impracticability of transportation, um, I'm assuming that this may change or grow based on what we need to do to get back to school for our own students, correct?
Sure. Well, for this year, this is this year's for 2020. We don't know what it's going to look like for 2021. As part of that transportation, there has been discussion of, um, not, not having bus services for non-public districts, um, just because of the way transportation is going to look next year. Now, I don't know if that's going to come to fruition, um, but this could look different next year.
Yeah, these are the payments for the people that were not bused this year.
Correct.
No, that's right, I was going to do that.
Yeah, we always have to do this kind of backwards, it seems to me, but.
We do it at the last, the last business meeting we have, and then we pay them before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I forgot that part. Okay, does anyone have any other questions? Okay, so, um, could I have, could I have a motion to accept the Chancellor's report, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H? A through H, it's still moved. A second? Go to the second. Roll call.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichols?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Other business, both board and administration, um, Operations Committee, the capital plan, second reading?
Uh, there was no changes from the first reading. Uh, if you'll remember, this was the scaled-down plan where we did, uh, technology and transportation were the two, uh, departments that we addressed this year with capital expenditures. And that's going to be what the second reading will be as well.
Just kicking the can down the road, but we have no choice. I make a motion that we accept the capital plan, second reading, or capital plan.
Second. Roll call.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Doc, and Mrs. Eichols?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Personnel Committee, um, we just have the minutes attached to the agenda?
Yeah, there's nothing to approve as a.
Right. It's just there, yeah, for your information. Okay, and our last item, um, we need to have a discussion, obviously, about our bond and operating levy. You have the two resolutions that came back from the state, from the county auditor regarding the actual millage based on.
Mrs. Eichols, those aren't resolutions, those are certifications.
Oh, sorry. Wrong word, sorry, certifications. We will pass a resolution to accept the certi-, uh, or, no, the resolution for the certifications. But you have the certifications in your packet, and they were emailed out prior. Um, so I'd just like to open for a bit of discussion, um, before there's, if there's going to be a motion.
I just, um, I, I will, um, talk about kind of where we've been, right?
Yeah.
Obviously, before the March 12th meeting, um, we got a lot of presentations, and we did, there were so many people that did so much work, and we did a lot of studying as a board and made determinations of the need in our district for both an operating levy and for the combined issuance. And, you know, we looked at various alternatives and, and passed a resolution on, on March 12th, uh, to move forward with combined issuance. And less than a week after that, um, COVID-19 became a pandemic, and life changed for everybody. And so we, um, we put it on hold, although we continued to talk about it in our virtual board meetings. And, um, so, kind of, it's, it's, it's a difficult decision because none of us know what COVID is going to look like. None of us know what November's going to look like. None of us know what May is going to look like. And, you know, we all made the decision, and it does, it hasn't changed, that we have the need for the operating levy, and we have the need for the bond. And so from my perspective, despite the fact that it's difficult, and none of us really know what the November election is going to look like, and none of us know how COVID has impacted and will continue to impact our community, I think that we made a reasoned decision based on a lot of facts and a lot of information to move forward with the bond. And I think that our concern has been, you know, what, what's it going to look like in educating the public? And, and so it's a condensed time period. None of us know if there's going to be, you know, we've opened up some now. Uh, none of us know if it'll continue to open up, or if it reverts back to closing up. But I don't know that we can continue to wait to see what's going to happen. Um, so, I know I've been all over the place on this because, uh, I personally have never had to live through a pandemic before, and, um.
You're not alone.
Uh, yeah. Um, and I think we've all learned to live differently and work differently in our respective jobs. And so, I'm ready to vote tonight, um, and, uh, I don't think, I wasn't ready to vote before because I was waiting, waiting for things to figure out, you know, how things were going to happen. That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah. I was scared.
I, I want to say that I have been so proud that this board could discuss it. We could disagree, we could say, I'm concerned, I need more time. I am ecstatic about the process. You know, what are these two things, never see sausage, your law is made? Maybe we ought to add school board on that, but I'm really proud of how things work, and it's great. I think you listen to me, and I feel like, I hope you believe I listen to you and Nikki. And so I'm very proud, and so I'm really, I, I hate that we waited an extra month, but I'm glad we waited an extra month. You know what I mean? I think it was important that we, we think about it and, and get our input and everything. So, I, I'm very happy where we are, and I'm, I'm actually happy with the process that we went through.
Elizabeth or Nikki?
Oh, well, I, I have to agree with you, Eddie. I think that's one of, um, the significant, uh, aspects of our school board. We've always been willing to listen to each other, and we've always been willing to look at all sides of the discussion. And there's, it's a difficult decision to make because, as Kim says, we don't know what COVID is going to look like.
No.
Hopefully, hopefully COVID is short-term. Our needs are long-term. We're voting on effects that welfare and education, uh, not only our students, but our community for the next 30, 50 years. So, this has been a very difficult decision, and, um, I think we need to give every community member the opportunity to weigh in on this. I mean, we've looked at this for three years. We've done an amazing amount of research. We've had a lot of, uh, community members involved on the Finance Committee and Operations Committee, and they unanimously came to the same decision, brought it forward to us for us to look at and consider. We've done our work as well, and, um, I'm proud of all of you.
So, I put down my thoughts into, um, before I say that, I just want to say thank you to all the community members who reached out to us. And some had questions, some had concerns, and a lot of them had a lot of support. And I really appreciate each of, each and every one of them, and their voices matter. And because of them, we are here. So, the reason many of them asked me, why did I take a pause? So, I took a pause in May because the economic situation surrounding the COVID-19 was very uncertain. And we were not sure what reopening would look like at the local and the national level. And I have always supported the levy and bond, which will continue because I think the board has done a phenomenal job of doing intense research into it. We just decided this yesterday, that this need is there, and we just put it on a ballot. I think the board has done a great job in finding, getting parents involved. And we had these two amazing committees, uh, Steering Committee and.
and we had these two amazing committees, steering committee and finance committee, which really looked into, and I was part of these, so I can speak for it, that we really looked into every detail and put this need together with the help of administrative team and the consultant in, I think, it was, the whole process was like it lasts two or three years, which shows there's a strong need for it. And the concern that I had at the time in May had been elevated, and I'm happy about it. So as things are changing, since we met last, and now we know that there are more data coming, so we are very well informed in comparison to May. There are a few facts that makes me feel better to go forward with this is, the economy is slowly recovering, and as Ohio slowly, like, as Ohio is slowly opening up, and I can see the economy is coming back slowly. We're getting more and more data that in Ohio, COVID numbers has been stable. It has not gone uncontrolled, and my only hope is that we don't see a second surge. And even if we see a second surge, this time we'll be more prepared because it's not a surprise, and we know how to deal with it. So that's making me feel better. And now we're getting more treatment options based on the evidence-based studies, and several sources have indicated that hopefully the vaccine is on its way sometime soon. I think by November, we will have COVID, but at least there is a better hope now. And then as per our RBC bond consultant, the municipal market condition seems very strong, and then the interest rates have gone historically low, which is amazing for us when we are looking for the bond. So just for, in February, we were looking at 3.75 versus, which is now 2.40. Although this rate can fluctuate, but still, if it remains this, and if bond and levy passes, then there's a significant saving for our taxpayers, which is like 50.1 million, I believe, right? So which is a huge amount. So with all, and all the budget cuts that we have seen from the states, which we know that are going to continue next year too. Looking at all this, I feel it is now more important that we put this levy on the ballot in November so that we don't have to make any cuts that would impact our community. So that's how now I feel much better and confident that, yes, we should put it in November and let people give choice to vote on it.
Great, and thank you, everyone, for your input. And I don't think there's a whole lot of difference than what I can say, other than, you know, a big thank you to the community committees, big thank you to the administration, big thank you to the board, the community who have comments, you know, and no matter whether they're for or against or unsure, having those comments makes us think through everything and recognizing that everybody has different opinions, and I think that that's really important going forward. And I think, you know, it isn't necessarily the job, it really isn't at all the job of the board, to determine how and when to win this levy. It's more to be sure that what we put out there is accurate, well thought out, and in line with the needs of the district. And I think now's the time. If we wait any longer, then we're going to really start getting into trouble. And it is time for the community to weigh in, and I am ready to move forward.
Can I ask a question? I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, but I'm not sure how the motion needs to be worded. Can I have?
Before we have a motion, I've got one public commentary as well, so.
Okay. Before you make a public comment, I'd just like to add additionally to Kim's point about where we were and where we are, that we've shared resources with the board. You all recall that we shared a lot of resources from the consultants back in February and March, and part of that, which I think is really important that Kim mentioned, is a community engagement phase moving forward as well, where we will continue to seek input and feedback along the way as we look ahead, if that's what the board chooses to do. And we do have those amended plans, and those are things that we can communicate about that I think the board can feel confident that we've adjusted that work if it's necessary, and if we need to use it, we're ready with it.
And we do have a statement from one of the committee members.
Correct. As part of this meeting, it was noticed out that public commentary could be sent to the treasurer. I did receive one email. That was from Bertolles, and I'll read it as written. "Steph Kushman, Craig Summerall, and I wanted to send along a message of support for tonight's bond levy vote. We would be there in person if permitted, but understand that it is not possible due to COVID-19 safety procedures. Please forward this message to the school board at tonight's meeting. Each of us strongly support moving forward with the bond levy issuance now. Our primary reasons are summarized below. The funding need has not gone away. In fact, we believe the coronavirus pandemic has made it more real now. We are facing state budget cuts and the possibility of additional expenditures to accommodate for COVID-19 protocols such as safety measures and investment in online learning, et cetera. Bond interest rates are at historical lows. This may be the best time to borrow money ever. Moving forward now will minimize the investments spent on short-term fixes to buildings. The continued need to apply Band-Aids to our facilities causes significant stress to the operational budget. With the general economic slowdown, we believe we will be poised to take advantage of low cost and high availability of construction teams and materials. We believe moving forward now will embrace the current sense of community and goodwill towards Indian Hill School District. We believe moving forward now will capitalize on higher voter turnout in November. Programs and curriculum will be at risk sooner by not having the bond levy issuance on the ballot this November. Every year this goes on, we have more risk of defections to private schools. Security needs for some of the campuses need to be funded sooner than later. We may also have a unique opportunity to address biological pathological issues. We acknowledge this is an unprecedented time, and issues relating to the coronavirus pandemic change almost daily. However, we do not believe delaying the vote until next spring or later increases the chances the levy passes. I am confident that this will pass this fall, ensuring the school district receives the necessary funds to maintain its status as one of the best school districts in Ohio. We appreciate all the work and time the school board and the various committees have put into this project to date. This has been a true community-wide effort. We look forward to continuing that community effort as we seek support for the vote's passage. Thank you for your consideration, Steph, Craig, and Barrett."
Thank you, Steph, Craig, and Barrett. That was very helpful, and I know that you've already put in a ton of time, and I expect that you're probably going to put in a lot more time. You know, I think we all know, there's never a good time to raise taxes. Nobody wants to do that, but sometimes, you know, it's necessary, and we waited as long as we can. So, did you want to make?
Yeah, I want to make a motion, but I want to make sure it's worded correctly. Can you help me with this?
So, Dr. Hooker, if you take that document that was in front of you? Yep. You'll see halfway down the middle of the page there, there's a box paragraph that's in bold.
Yep.
It starts with a resolution. I think if you read that, that that will be the resolution that we need to pass.
I make a motion that we pass a resolution determining to proceed with submitting to the electors of the school district the single question of the issuance of school facilities improvement bonds and the aggregate principal amount of $77 million, and the levying of an additional 2.46 mil tax to provide funds for current operating expenses pursuant to section 5705.218 of the revised code.
And then below that language, there's some additional language there that's part of the resolution. That will go out when we put the minutes to the, on the.
As part of my motion, I've asked that all this be attached.
Correct.
And do we have a second? I second. Roll call.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichols?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
And the board in particular. I remember the long nights and all the reading, and to Melissa, Nick, Kirk, the time that you all put in, and everybody else on the staff that participated. I'm just praying that it all pays off, and that you can all have a proud ending to this, so.
We look forward to communicating out some next steps to the community soon for the next phase of community engagement to talk about pre-bond planning, and that will give our community also a chance for input directly with us and more recommendations in the future, and we'll be sharing that information out soon.
And I do want, for those that are actually watching us, and they need to understand that the board cannot advocate for passage of this bond or levy. We can answer a question if they want to contact us, but we are not allowed by law to go and try to advocate for it. So am I correct on, that's the right wording?
We're not here to change anybody's minds.
Yep. So we will be delighted to provide education on what it means, but you can talk to the committees that will be formed that can advocate all they want, but we cannot do that. So it's not that we're not trying to advocate for something we believe in, it's that we can't by law do so.
Okay. Is there any other business? Hearing that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.